We're going to go ahead and open this work session of the Squim City Council. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Deputy Mayor Anderson.
I forgot I was running it. All right, so for everybody's recollection, last work session, we had a ton of very great input from all of the senior management team and from city manager. I was hoping that a lot of today's meeting would just be council discussion, since last one was very informative. And does anybody have any questions before we start?
Only Heather can project the document that we tended to talk off of last time. We don't, our senior management team's just here to answer questions, but that listed your eight, or really what was six, of your priorities. So if that's how you want to proceed, whatever, we also have the supporting documents that we used last time, should you want to refer to them, but I think they're in your packet as well. So we're just really comfortable answering any questions that you have.
All right, Harmony, yeah.
Thank you. So in attachment number four, what does the acronym CMO stand for?
City Manager Office.
Ah ha, thank you. And then in one point in the document, it references the seven neighborhoods of Squim. Is that just because there are seven neighborhoods of Squim?
It wasn't my typing. I would have to, can you get closer to the reference?
Yes.
Or maybe anybody on senior management team know what that refers to?
Sorry, let me open it up.
Thanks, Harmony. Yeah, I'm not sure which document you're referring to, but back in 2018, there was the establishment of neighborhood groups, and we had a big meeting down at Guy Cole. I think we had about 180 participants where we broke the group into their neighborhood sections. They picked the names of their neighborhoods, and from that, we developed potential lists of projects in gearing up for the service fest that we had that year.
Okay.
We all went out and met with the neighborhood groups. It was a pretty big movement at the time, but I believe that those are the seven neighborhoods that are being referred to.
Okay.
In whatever document.
Okay, I'm sorry, I should have written, I left myself a note for that question, but I didn't leave myself a note for the other one. Great, thank you for the context. Those were my questions.
Just a quick question for Heather. Have you heard from Dan at all? Yep, Dan's online. Oh, excellent. Okay, I didn't see.
Yep. Good afternoon from Port Angeles. Thank you for letting me join.
Did he speak to some of the, he's stuck in the traffic. There's a fatality out on 101, so just if you hadn't heard that, he's stuck on the other side of the.
And I found the reference, it was in attachment number five.
Thanks, Vicky.
But yeah, based on your comments, it sounds like there was some designation of neighborhood groups, and so I really appreciate the context. Thank you.
All righty, any other questions from council? All right. Well, we have some options. We do have some empty boxes in the proposed city council work plan section, and I wasn't sure if council wanted to add something in there so that our part of the work plan has clear direction. Okay, would you like some help?
Well, and I will let council know that we didn't plan on pushing work back to you. Our attempt was to take the first column, which was your black and red, and to propose a work plan or implementation of that, you know, kind of in an operations thing. As we did that, and it started off all on us, as we went back and refined it, it's like, yeah, this really would be easier or more for them. So it, we're not, just, you don't have to have things in there. That was just us brainstorming on action that could be taken around your priorities, but not, you know, trying to tell you what to do, or what you, or whatever. It just felt like it was perhaps more yours than ours, but might help accomplish what your priority is. But you don't, you don't need to feel like you need to do those things. This is just our draft.
I think council has mentioned before, if you look at number one, under the city SWAT results, turning focus from city building infrastructure to community infrastructure, emphasizing roads. To me, and council has said this out loud before, I or we would like to see the roads in the outlying areas developed also. Like more attention to South Squim, which hasn't, seems like it hasn't had as much attention as the downtown. And Vicky and I have been talking about sidewalks, and I worked on that a little bit last week, and I'll send it to you, Vicky, but I think it's about time. I know that the grants sometimes have parameters, that they want them to be state routes, or larger roads, or whatever, but if somebody, if the city administration can help us along with that, it would be good. Thank you.
Yeah, we'd be honored to, and I think we proposed on several of your priorities, the idea of a work plan where we can go into more detail with you for 45 minutes to tell you where we're at on some of those things. And I think Paul is prepared to do that, because we will refer back to the master plans, the transportation plan and others that we can give you an update on, and the CIP in more detail.
I think Nicole had a question, and then Vicky.
I was just noting that sometimes the scheduling of work sessions is under the proposed city staff work plan, like in item one, and then item two, sometimes it's under proposed city council work plan where it says utilizing work sessions. So I think a lot of those blank areas are just places where, like Matt suggesting, go into a deep dive into something, and then that's, that's great.
And I just want to kind of remind us where the infrastructure conversation came from, and it's, you know, that there's a lot of things that have needed to be fixed in the last few years, and it has been a lot focused on buildings and technology, and that's been important, because we were really behind. But we've also been behind in the infrastructure for the city. As we all know, I live in the downtown area, and I have been waiting my entire life for the sidewalks to appear that we were promised a long time ago. And I know, you know, we get these new developments, and the sidewalks come as part of the development, but people would walk more. I would walk more downtown if I had a path that wasn't full of potholes and mud puddles, and I mostly walk down the alleys, which is kind of stinky on garbage day. So I just feel like, you know, if we want to provide more, more, not really green space, but more, I guess less cars and emissions, and invite people more to join some of these downtown things we're doing, it would be good for them to have a path. And also, also, even though I lived in town, I drove my kids to school every day, because again, there weren't safe paths, and we've come about halfway through that, but there's still kids who live in the downtown areas that don't have a safe place to walk to school either.
There we go. Now it's lit up. I know, I know it's working now. So we've been looking for the last, since I've been here, alternative ways of funding some of these improvements. Kathy, you're absolutely right. There are grant funds out there, but they are very limited in their nature, and the types of projects they will fund. We continually pursue those. We just completed two grant applications to the Transportation Improvement Board, and one of them is for improving Ninth, and right by Costco, because we know there's going to be the rest of the development that's going to go out there, and then connecting the remainder of that road on the lower end in front of the clinic. We're also looking at a couple of different options for Legislative ASK. We're looking at the opportunity, does it make sense for us to look at, I put it out there, and there's no guarantees, does it even work right now, but bonding our transportation benefit district to come up with a lot of money that we could use for sidewalks within our community on projects and roads that would not be funded by any grant agency. We're looking at West Quin Bay Road to see what could be done out there, partial versus a full road improvement, and sidewalk on one side versus on both sides, which is a much bigger lift. So we are looking at a lot of different options, and we look at grant funds continuously as they come up, and try and figure out what's the right type of project to pitch for that particular grant fund, and whether we have a viable ask for it or not.
Thank you very much. Have you, has anybody applied, it's called SS numeral four A, meaning save sidewalks for all? Has the city applied for that, do you know?
Megan might be able to answer the question, whether it's been done of late. There are some federal programs that you have to have a pretty significant ask in order to go after. I'm not sure if we have anything quite big enough on that one. A good example is Nick's going to be before you tonight about the RACE grant, and accepting their RACE grant provisions. RACE is usually, it's a federal program. You want something of significance to apply that's going to make a difference in your community, and those are big dollar values. If you got small stuff, you just don't make the cut. They're just not interested in funding small stuff for us.
I understand that. And something, getting back to something even more basic, council has asked in the past, do we need an ordinance saying that we have to have sidewalks? Because in the early 1920s, the ordinance is concentrated on sidewalks in front of new homes. And then in the early 1970s, the sidewalk ordinance concentrates on the downtown sidewalks, safe sidewalks in front of businesses. So do we, as a council, need to go back and write an ordinance for sidewalks in front of the older homes that were built before the 1980s?
May I ask you a question on that? Who would, who would fund that?
Well, we don't know yet.
Okay. Right now, the way most jurisdictions handle this, if you have an area that is developing or redeveloping, then they're required to do the frontage improvements, unless their frontage improvement is so much more expensive that actually stops the project, because they can't afford to do it. So a single-family resident coming in, nobody else has sidewalks, you tell them they have to go build sidewalks, the sidewalk improvements, you can't just build sidewalks, you've got to do the frontage, which is the rest of the road on their half, and that all of a sudden costs three times more than what they're proposing to do on their site, so they shut down, they don't do it. So it's not a commensurate benefit for the impact of what they're proposing to do. So most single-family residential applications, most usually get bypassed on that, not to say it's, it's not the best way. Going in and asking people who have lived in their homes for many years, and now they have to spend $50,000 or $60,000 to do a public improvement, it is probably not the best idea either, be frank with you. That's where we go after the grant funds, and we find a way that we can fund it with internal funds, a block at a time, a half block at a time, but with, with purpose and intent.
Well, I agree. That's what I had in mind. But what's wrong with the city setting aside $100,000 and asking for people to apply for it, to put in a sidewalk or improve the sidewalk in front of their house?
Absolutely nothing.
Keeping statistics on it, seeing how it goes? I understand some people aren't going to be allowed to park on it anymore, because if, some people park where the sidewalk should be. So there's a lot of things to take into consideration.
There are. I think we would require them, of course, to build the curb gutter sidewalk to the city standards. It becomes challenging when a single-family residence goes to do that, and then we have to do all the inspection and make sure they're building it right. We can do that. The other way is to use $100,000 to leverage additional grant funds that would give us another $500,000. We just made an application, one of our transportation improvement grants was for building and or replacing 62, last time I saw it, curb ramps that are deficient, that were identified through our ADA evaluation. So we're, we're going to be using 100, some of the 150,000 in 2015 that's already budgeted for improvements, and we're going to be using a fair amount of that to leverage another, I think it was 700, $650,000 more through the TIB. So by doing it that way, we're actually able to get almost $800,000 worth of work done with a minimal effort on the city's side as far as funding goes.
But wouldn't it make sense to make it mandatory that you redo the curb ramp, meaning wheelchair access, stroller access, things like that? If a sidewalk is done, then that's the time to do a curb ramp, instead of just going through town and doing curb ramps.
Every time we come through with a public project that is doing a road improvement, and if there are no sidewalks, then part of our project is curb gutter sidewalk and ramps. When we come in and we do an overlay, which means we're just basically refreshing the road, we grind an overlay, at that time, we also look for the opportunity to replace any deficient ADA ramps, too.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to say real quick, Dan, I hope you can still hear us. I'm sorry, I can't see you on screen. So if you have any questions, definitely let it be known.
Thank you. I am able to listen, and I appreciate the conversation so far.
All right, any other questions from council?
Just a statement, so just because you and Lindsay are new, Paul, this came up because we did ask about sidewalks, and the plan that was created was $40 million, is that right? For sidewalks? Yes. And we were told it would take 100 years. We didn't feel like that was a good plan, so that's why we keep talking about sidewalks.
All righty, any other comments from SMT? All right. Well, just going to fill up the room here. How's everybody feeling about the action items on our work plan? I really do love the suggestions. I really think that they are manageable, and I really appreciate that. Anybody else?
I do want to see us inviting Tim Dalton from the county back for more work sessions. I think he has some ideas, and he had some ideas about some joint work sessions with other partners in the county. So I think that that's someplace we could really leverage all of our funds together and make an impact. And can I keep going? And when we were, you, I wasn't at the work session, I was in traffic trying to get to Spokane. But there was talk about workforce housing versus low-income housing versus affordable housing. And I just want to remind everybody, we still don't have any data to know what it is we need. I mean, we need, anything helps, and even those 700 houses that aren't workforce housing, that aren't affordable housing, will help, because then the people who are coming in and buying up the affordable housing and the workforce housing can buy at that level, and that can help open up other housing. But we still don't have data to know how much affordable housing, workforce housing, and low-income housing we need.
I love that you keep bringing that up, and I agree 100%. You've got to do an analysis to know what to go after and fix. And I'll turn it over to Lindsay, who has a response to that, and I think you've heard it before, but it's always good to get it on the record.
Thank you. Yes, correct. We will be providing, through the comprehensive plan update, we need to do what is considered a housing land capacity analysis, and that'll show us all of the land within the city limits of Squim that is considered developable or redevelopable, which will also help identify some of those nearby road networks that might be able to be funded through development costs when developments come in. And then we will also be doing a housing needs assessment to preliminarily lay out the identification of the different typologies of homes. Single family is great for those that make 120 or over Aryan median income. We do typically see different housing typologies when we're talking about workforce, affordable or low to no-income housing needs. Thank you.
Does this take into consideration any kind of documentation on the numbers of Airbnb's VRBOs? Because it seems like a lot of the very entry-level housing that I see coming on the market is pretty much snapped up and converted right away. So I don't know that somebody moving into a new, new development and upgrading from where they're currently living would necessarily free up that housing if they decided to rent it out.
You know, we have heard from the Planning Commission about the desire to study vacation rentals and the amount of vacation rentals and/or short-term rentals by owner that are available within the city limits, that it's something that's not on the work program this year due to the comprehensive plan, but I do plan on presenting that to the Planning Commission. And as you guys may know, you overview the annual work program for the Planning Commission each year, so would anticipate that that be likely seen on the 2025 work program. We will need to do some analysis through data to identify how many active short-term rentals, vacation rentals by owner, or whole-unit rentals, sub-rentals we do have. But that is data that, as you're aware, we need to know before we identify and know if we're building and/or creating or establishing these workforce housings, we need to create some tools and levers in there to ensure that it's for long-term rental viability.
Again, though, there are people running those vacation homes that are not licensed by the city, so it's on the honor system. There are people renting out short-term rentals, vacation homes, and whatever, that are not licensed by the city. So you would only have statistics on the people who are honest enough to license them through the city.
No, we would be utilizing the programs through technology that they're utilizing to rent, not through business licenses. So there's ways to study the, the black market, I should say.
Very interesting. Okay.
Yeah. There are no regulations on short-term rentals right now, so we don't have any data on that, because there is no permitting process for that.
But aren't they confined to certain zones? Aren't they confined to certain neighborhoods?
Currently, I believe there's particular zoning districts, but there is no process for short-term rental permitting.
Got it. Thank you.
Just for the benefit of everyone in the room and in this conversation, I anticipate when we go down this path, it may be a very interesting, compelling time of much, much conversation and opinion. I, right as, I'm trying to remember when Port Angeles went through this process, but it was very recently, and one of the counselors invited me to one of their, one of those sessions, and it was a very good, new counselor experience for me, because I wasn't involved in the conversation, and I just was there to observe. And it will, if we go down this path, and we should as a community, it's going to be a time of much conversation.
Correct. Thank you for bringing that up. The analysis will likely be what's on the work program for 2025. The full code and wherever direction that goes from that would be in future years, most likely.
A city attorney has a comment, I think? Maybe.
Yeah, thank you. I would just like to add that in 2021 or 2022, the legislature, state legislature passed some laws indicating that, you know, those that go through the Airbnb platform, for example, those, that their lodging taxes associated with that community comes back to the jurisdiction. So there's, there may be some data to mind there as well, so.
I would also just remind us all that this is, this is a moving target. That whole industry is changing rapidly. Their stock price is, you know, they, like anything, the pendulum overswung and is now trying to correct itself all over America. So by the time we get to it, you know, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see how it corrects or where it's at at that point, so.
Another interesting tidbit is when we did the survey last year, very few people listed housing as an issue. I was, I guess they were thinking more like parks and traffic and parking spaces or something, but very few people said housing. I was kind of surprised.
All right. Anything else from anybody? I haven't heard from Dan. I'm keeping an ear out, Dan. All right. Well, I am ready to go through the city council work planned, work plan sections, and see if everybody, everybody as in council, is comfortable with approving these items. Under the, number one, infrastructure needs to catch up with growth. The box is empty, but I would like to add, if everybody is comfortable with it, I would like to add that council support key infrastructure projects, and also support legislative infrastructure funding that operations will ask for, if that, does that make sense? Okay. Okay. How's that sound? I got some nods. Yeah?
Is that all it's going to say?
Can I, just for me?
Vicky? Yeah. Clarification. So the proposed city staff work plan, are we picking from there and whatever, what we choose? I mean, wasn't that what you guys did for the proposed work plan, is what you wanted to see us approve?
Right, the blue, the far right, is our proposal to respond to the far left, meaning columns. And so you're welcome to, and eventually, we would like to move this toward some kind of adoption, or motion, or whatever. So you probably ought to quickly look at both the green and the blue to see if you're comfortable, or want to change any words, or whatever. I was reminded by our city attorney that in your motion for your green on number one, you may want a little more clarification, like what support means? Is that, was that your point?
Yeah, does that mean just, you know, yay, we love the project, but darn, we're not going to put any money towards it, or, right? So because, because there may come a time, hopefully not, Sue, but there may come a time where we need to start looking at things, right? You know, okay, I only have X amount of money in our checkbook. What one are we going to do? And so support, support is very broad for staff.
That's true. That's true. And I think it's a good time to bring up prioritizing, and we do, we have a lot going on, just as a city, there's a lot going on. City manager, did you have a comment?
No, I'll just say, and I, but I do appreciate your, I didn't get the whole motion word perfect, but that you would support a legislative agenda that supports our operational infrastructure needs, and that is both on your agenda for your council meeting tonight, and DeVore will be interested in that discussion with you as well. So thank you for considering that support.
Kathy? Well, I was just going to say, I'm not good at wordsmithing, but for clarification, supporting legislative infrastructure funding, that would look like putting it on our legislative agenda of, I think last year's or the year before, there was like kind of a blanket statement of supporting operations funding, or there was something like that. And so it would, in my mind, the supporting legislative infrastructure funding would look like that. So on
So on the, our, our legislative agenda, preferably a front and back, and on one side would be like supporting any legislation for infrastructure funding. So does that help clarify at least that part?
I certainly understand what you're talking about. And this isn't, you know, this is an internal document, so.
Right.
And we, when you get to that part in your council meeting tonight to talk about, we have worked internally, of course, in public works and whatnot, and a little bit with DeVore too. So we have our, I think we have six at this point. We probably still need, it's work in progress. And so what, what we feel like we need to, as a city, operationally ask from the legislatures in funding to pull off some capital improvements, we're getting, we're narrowing in on that. And we know that you're gonna talk about what do you want to do policy-wise, but if one of your policies is to support the other side of the page, which is our, you know, physical or capital needs, that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add on to what you just said and say something like that supports through legislation and/or financing pedestrian safety. I think we need to just say it. Everything we say is so vague. Is it, am I making any sense? Thank you.
So I, just to clarify, are you talking about the legislative agenda, or are you talking about this work plan?
This work plan.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And adding it on to what you said, which was great.
Right.
Not just pedestrian safety. That includes pedestrian safety.
Mm-hmm. I was trying to rack my brain about, I think it's really important to clarify the support key infrastructure projects, but at the same time, I'm very hesitant to prioritize one of our priorities over the others. I don't want to box myself in.
Put it on the receipt and writing, that's all.
Yeah. Okay.
Because it's not there. Thank you.
Brandon, do you have a comment? Okay. Yeah.
Just wanted to echo what you were just sharing, Rachel, that if we start writing down pedestrian safety, what else is not on that list? I mean, pedestrian safety is very, very important, and it's a very clear need in our community that there's just not enough of it. There's just not enough infrastructure for active transportation. So in, in the south area of our city and all over. Either way, I digress. But yes, if we start making a list, what else is not on that list?
That's fine. It doesn't have to be exclusively. Because when you're running the whole city, it's not gonna be exclusive. I just want to see it mentioned on the work.
Kathy? Including, yeah, go ahead.
I think if we're talking about like goals and priorities, we can be more vague. But when we're talking about work plan, I think we should be more specific. So I like what you said, Kathy, because pedestrian safety also includes roads being taken care of, stoplights working right. Yeah.
So it could be your motion to include public safety, blah, blah, blah. You could just put, tag that at the bottom, so it's everything, it's the broad, you know, comment or motion, and then to include that as well.
Right.
Since this is a work plan for council, what if, since under that number one, turning focus from city building infrastructure to community infrastructure, what if our task then is to define what that means for staff? Where, maybe we need to have a session to sit and talk about, well, what exactly does that mean and have the definition, so it's not so vague? And that's where we can put down pedestrian safety, traffic signals, you know, various things like that.
Another meeting.
Another meeting. Yeah.
And a quick time check, we have 10 minutes left. Yeah.
I feel like we just did all that, though. That wasn't that last week or two weeks ago and?
Yeah, and I wasn't here for the retreat, so I'm not sure what was discussed.
Me either. Yeah. I think, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good might come into play here. The paralysis of analysis.
And I was, I was thinking we'd come into this and be like, all right, it's approved, next. Okay. So we would need another work session for that because it is way, trying to get seven brains together to formalize what does community infrastructure mean, I think would take longer than 10 minutes.
I like what you and Kathy put together, though.
Just, okay, so just, just the legislative part, or do you mean the infrastructure for the city part? Does that make sense?
Both.
Both. Okay. Yeah.
Can you please read your, do you have it written down? Do you have a motion written down? Could you read your draft one more time, please?
So I, I don't have a motion. I was just adding things into empty boxes so that there was clear guidance for us. And so for the number one box, infrastructure needs to catch up with growth, I had two bullet points written down. The first one was support key infrastructure projects. However, Christina brought up a good point that, that needs to be clearer and more specific. Vicky also brought up the specific, specificity, something like that? That's a word. And the second bullet point, support legislative infrastructure funding. So like an action plan for that, instead of that bullet point, could look like add, I'm really just spitballing here, add supporting infrastructure funding to legislative agenda. Does that make sense? Okay.
And then Kathy's addition was?
Including.
Pedestrian.
So we could just make that a bullet point. Okay. All righty. For city clerk, for the record, I will try to make this as clear as possible, because you'll likely have to type it out. Okay. In the number one, infrastructure needs to catch up with growth, proposed city council work plan box. I want to try and get it right the first time. Add to legislative agenda that council will support infrastructure funding from legislation, resources.
State budget.
There you go. State budget. Let me know if I'm not clear.
Keep going.
Okay. And pedestrian safety. How's that? Everybody feel good about, feel good about it? Yes.
Would the word promote be better than support?
Not in my mind.
Okay.
But explain, like?
Because I feel like support has the connotation of, it can be having the connotation of financial allocation towards a project or goal or idea in such a way, but promote, I feel like is more, is less, is, can, it could be construed as less tied towards a financial obligation.
Well, I think when it comes to the legislative side, trying to get funding, that's all financial.
Okay.
So trying to, and so in my mind, supporting, like, working with our lobbyist.
Hmm, okay.
It would then be like him, you know, trying to find all the bills that the city would get behind in order to get more money from the state budget.
Okay. So then the word support is being used in a legislative context for, for, for led, for bills, legislation?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay, all right. I'm into that.
Okay. And that was the only one that I have that can be clear for that top box.
And do we want to say for the, what's from the proposed city staff work plan? I feel like these are gonna happen anyways, right? But is there anything we want to pull off of there into our green box? Are we gonna merge these or just understand that these are things that are gonna happen?
It, it was my understanding that the green column is for us to have clear guidance about what our priorities are. So like, working in committees or when we're liaisoning, we have that clear picture. And then the blue would be operations.
Do we need a second for the motion you just made?
I have not made a motion yet.
Okay.
I am just getting foundational.
Okay.
Things.
Just making sure I didn't hear you say, I move.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Wait. Point of order. Didn't you guys just vote on not voting for things during work sessions? I voted against it, but didn't you guys vote? Oh.
Yeah, I don't think we made it concrete.
Can everybody please use the microphone so we can catch it on the audio?
And right now, you're just filling in the Word document. You're, there was, when you're done filling in words, I mean, none of this is motion, but you may want to make a motion once you've filled in and you've had your conversation about that document, then you may want to adopt the document. So I don't think there's motions in this work session relative to that until you're, you want to move on the entire document. Does that make sense?
So when they're listening to the playback for direction, the meeting doesn't catch you unless you are talking into the microphone?
I had my microphone on.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay.
I did, too.
I don't know if Brandon did. Nicole?
Is this something, a document that has to be formally adopted, or is this, can this be a living document? And then when we're up with a business item that we need to take action on, we just keep this for reference and go, well, what did we say the priority was? What did we say staff was going to do or what, what we committed to? Because if this is a living document, we could keep adding to it as we go along. Just an idea.
So it can be, I, I just want to insert, so it can be a living document, and we can modify it anytime you want. But because you use Dave Mercer for both your retreat, and he's the one that created column one or to the left, when I reached out to him and said, we're getting ready to do a retreat, and he said, great, work on putting an action plan together around the councils, and if you can get it to move to adoption, then when, then when the year's up and council's left to evaluate you, Matt Huish, again, on how you did, if, and if you followed some of their priorities, I don't like the idea of that. So, no, just kidding. But so that, that the whole idea is to tie everything together, evaluations, our actions, your priorities, and try to connect them. So that, that's why he said, you know, try to outline it in this way and, and how it would tie to, you know, a March evaluation perhaps.
All right. So time check, I don't, we have one minute. No, we don't. We're out of time. And I'm not ready to make a motion, and I don't think everybody else is ready to formalize So the possibility of another work session is very high. I apologize for that. Let's see, should we just try and schedule that now? Does everybody, how's your September looking? Brandon's might be busy.
Rachel?
Yes.
If I may, you know, and this doesn't need to be necessarily before the city council meeting, but at some point, probably in September, either the first or second meeting, we're going, HR Director Emily Stednik and I are going to want to come and talk to council about bargaining parameters for our non-uniform group. So just keep that consideration in mind, if you'd like.
Okay.
So either the ninth or the 23rd?
Possibly. Maybe October, if the September meetings are.
Well, then the year is almost up. We have a whole month till the next meeting.
That's true. Yeah.
I have a silly question. Why are we not meeting again in August?
Breakfast.
Every, every January.
Are we allowed to have a work session on any Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so why not meet like, I don't know, next week or sometime in August?
This council and the previous councils before us have traditionally not had the second August meeting.
Okay.
It's squim. It's the squim way.
Okay.
It's just, honestly, it's nice to take a break.
Okay.
I really appreciate the break.
We can have a work session anytime.
Yeah.
It's, if it's just a work session, I, I don't know. Okay. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm just asking, like I said, a silly question, but I don't know. If it's, okay. But I'm gonna stop there. Thanks.
Can I just say, September 9th and tell everybody, be there, be square? Work session. Tentative, hopefully, yes, a work session, September 9th, 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, SMT, for being here. And we will see everybody at 6:00 PM.
Okay, go ahead and call this meeting of the Squim City Council to order. First, call ahead and stamp the pot of allegiance. If the city clerk could please take roll call.
Counselor Kathy Downer, here. Counselor Dan Butler. Counselor Vicky Lowe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson, present. Mayor Brandon Janice.
Present.
Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
And Counselor Butler is stuck in traffic due to the collision, so hopefully he's able to make it, but at this time, if there's a motion to excuse him.
I will motion to excuse.
I will second it.
Made it and seconded any objections? Okay, he is excused, and hopefully he's able to join us a little bit later. All right. Item four, approval of the final agenda. Is there any changes to the final agenda?
I motion to approve the final agenda.
I second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any, anything further? Any opposed? All right, see, and then motion passes. All right. Item five, the ceremonial for overdose awareness proclamation. And whereas August 31st is recognized as International Overdose Awareness Day, the world's largest annual campaign to end overdose, reduce stigma, remember those we have lost to an overdose, acknowledge the grief of the family and friends left behind, and renew our commitment to end overdose and related harms. And whereas the campaign raises awareness of overdose, which is one of the world's worst public health crises, and stimulates action and discussion about evidence-based overdose prevention and drug policy. And whereas in 2023, Clough County had the second highest rate of overdose deaths in the state of Washington. And whereas, when lives are cut short by overdose, not only do we not realize the full potential of that, that a person's life would have in our community, but we also lose their line of decency. And whereas the loss of loved ones to overdose impacts families, especially young children and friends across the country. And whereas losses in our community also impact systems of care such as health, healthcare, schools, emergency medical response. And whereas our community is strongest when we stand together to support those impacted by overdose and. Now therefore, I, Brandon Janice, mayor of the city of Squim, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize August 31st, 2024, as International Overdose Awareness Day. The theme for 2024 is Together We Can, highlighting the power of our community when we. When we when we all stand together, we invite Squim community members to join in the Clough County overdose awareness day event to be held Saturday, August 31st, 2024 in Port Angeles. Signed on this 12th day of August 2024.
And I believe that the people who were coming in person were stuck in traffic as well. So is Sandra Allen or Amy Miller or Carlos Osorio online to accept?
Both of those, both of those people are online.
Okay, I think they might have something to say.
Amy, you can go ahead and unmute and address the council.
Can you hear me okay?
You're a little quiet.
That's the first time anyone's ever accused me of that.
We can hear you now.
Well, thank you. My name is Amy Miller, and I really am grateful to be invited here tonight to witness this and to be part of the invitation to the community of Squim. And I just want to highlight that your participation does make a meaningful impact, and we are working to end overdose. And we are, the event is a supportive event. It is free for the community. And it is to support those affected by addiction like myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Sandra online too?
Yes, she is.
Sandra, did you have anything to say?
Oh, I just got the I just got the notification that I can unmute. It's so different being in a Zoom of this style, but good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Allen. I work at Peninsula Behavioral Health, and I supervise the Outreach Services Department. And I just wanted to show my gratitude and appreciation to the city of Squim and the members of the city council tonight for the proclamation and recognizing the importance of International Overdose Awareness Day. We really are grateful to have the city of Squim's participation in this and hope to see some of you at the event. Thank you.
Any comments from council?
I also want to just share gratitude. Thank you, everyone who was involved in preparing this proclamation. At this time, I think it would be really helpful if we if you could share, Vicky, what time the event on the 31st is being held.
Or can I ask Sandra or Amy to share that? I think there's an invite that will be coming to each of you. I'd have to look on my phone.
Hi, yeah. So we've planned the event for Saturday, August 31st to kick off at 11:00 AM. We're going to be having a resource fair from 11 to 12, where we'll have a multiple community partners there sharing information and resources to include naloxone, which is the life-saving medication for overdose reversal. So naloxone training and then just some other resources for those who may be interested. Then we'll have a march to the courthouse at 12:00 PM sharp. And that will go from 12 to 1:00. We'll stop on the march and rally at the courthouse steps. And then we'll silently walk back to the pier at around 1:00 o'clock where we will have a remembrance ceremony. And that's scheduled to go from 1:00 to 4:00, and there'll be some other additional activities going on during that time.
Thank you very much, Sandra.
Yeah, 11 to 4:00. And then we have a flyer that we can send over to you that details all this information, and it has a link to some more overdose awareness info. And then, yeah, like Vicky said, an invitation will be coming out. Thank you.
Anything else from council? All right, moving on. Item six, public comment. Before we go on, I'd like to say this is a limited public forum. Individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. And this is not a forum for hate speech. The city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support hate speech. Speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. Any offensive words or conduct and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. The city of Squim stands firm in its commitment to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind. City clerk?
No one has registered for virtual comment. So for in-person comment, for individuals attending in person, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. I will collect the sign-in sheet shortly. If you wish to make a comment, please sign up. Each person will have three minutes to speak on any topic, and there will be a timer visible on the screen. A total of 30 minutes will be permitted for public comments. Please state your name if you are representing an organization and your city of residence. And our first speaker tonight is Jim Stauffer.
Good evening, council and staff. I'm Jim Stauffer. I'm a resident of Clough County, just right outside the city limits. Three items, maybe four, but first one is I want to thank the staff and then all the volunteers, because there's a lot of community events from the food boxes to fireworks show, the bike ride that recently happened. And it takes all those folks working together, and it's a good team out there between staff and all the volunteers. So thank you. As you know, I'm a maybe you don't know, but I'm retired Coast Guard, and part of that is doing good in your community. And so I still try to do that. One event, the 4th of July, though, has some concerns. It's coding and safety. We know that we can't light off fireworks inside the city limits, but you can buy them. And so on that 4th of July event, as I was monitoring traffic and parking and safety near Cary Blake Park and the Methodist Church, I stopped several families from lighting off fireworks. And then we had some folks that were lighting off in the field behind us, behind the Methodist Church that goes also into Bladesfield. Things were pretty dry. Now, everyone I spoke to said, but I just bought these in town. So the city signs an agreement with the Methodist Church for that area and an insurance agreement. And that would have if that field caught on fire, would have been a lot of safety concerns there. So I just asked the council to look and look at that code and strongly consider changing. And there's going to need to be more signage from people using fireworks in the city. Next thing, Coast Guard Day, 4th of August. We just passed that 234 years. So next year's 235 years on the 4th of August. Councilperson Hartman there is a daughter of a retired coastie. 235 years of continuous service, the oldest maritime continuous service. So you have time to plan for that. Hopefully, there'll be a resolution, a proclamation. There's a lot of coasties that walk among us and fly over us a lot. So there's some homework for you. Last, I heard you talk about legislative items, and I encourage you to work with the other elected bodies. Because at the beginning, it start at the base, it starts with public education, which is paramount in our state constitution. Everybody needs to work together for that. And last, I heard about the Drug Awareness Day. So Trinity United Methodist is putting up some Narcan kits in our little free pantry there. It'll be available for our guests that use our little free pantry. Thank you.
All right, our next person for public comment, Arnold Bleisher.
Thank you. Arnold Bleisher, I live at 160 Petal Lane in Squim. I don't represent anyone. I am the HOA president for Cherry Blossom Estates, but I'm not claiming to represent them. I'm addressing you this evening regarding the current condition of 7th Avenue from Silverhorn North, the McCurdy. Rolling Hill subdivision is being developed along the section of city roadway. My concern is not the development. In fact, the future residents of that subdivision will likely be very pleased with the development. However, the current residents in the area aren't not so pleased with the condition of the road. Those of us who drive, walk, and bike that stretch of 7th Avenue on a daily basis, we're concerned about our safety and rightly so. In fact, this evening on the way here, we passed a gentleman who was trying to navigate that section in a motorized wheelchair. Yes. Development continues on the interior of the new subdivision. Utilities have been have been and are still being placed. That section of 7th Avenue is a mess. The developer, Lennar, and the city staff have told us this section of 7th will be paved and a sidewalk installed by the end of summer. I'm asking the council to encourage staff to continue coordinating and working with the developer to ensure that this work will be done as promised. The window for asphalting the street is narrowing. It's conceivable that we could get to a point where we're told it's too late and we'll have to endure an entire winter of street conditions that are not only inconvenient to those who drive it, walk it, and bike it, but this downright dangerous. Asking the city and the developer to look at safety issues for current residents is not out of line. Please instruct staff to continue their coordinating with Lennar and to address the condition of this section of 7th Avenue, including the installation of the promised sidewalk and to get this work completed by the end of summer. Thank you.
Just a note to council. I think Counselor Butler has joined us online.
And our last person for public comment tonight is Lee Fox.
First, I want to thank the city council for this platform to be able to address the community. I live here in Squim. I believe it or not, I'm a CERT member, and that means I care about you guys. And as a CERT member, we're allowed to get advanced training. We had two weeks ago specialized training up at the campus, which I attend. I'm a student. I'm a retired engine boss, crew boss, wildland firefighter for 10 years. And so I come to you with some knowledge, and I brought, I made some copies of something that people should be aware of how to do. And this involves your home. I want you guys to be able to go back to your home, have a home. I've seen too many burnt down and have to put out the smoke before people return just to get whatever items are left. Believe it or not, with the weather, we still are in fire season. So what I did was I took notes, took pictures. And what I did was I copied the fire zones around your home. I made five copies. I'll share these with whoever wants one, but it talks about the zones, zero to five feet from your home, what to have, what not to have, planted, different things. And then you got five to 30 feet. The reason why I say this is because as a wildland firefighter, there was times where we didn't have time to triage everybody's house. We would simply go through and we would look at houses. And if they had too many, we would say, not savable. Move on to the next. Not savable. Move on to the next. Now, I don't like saying that, but that's a reality. And I've seen it in the Metow, in the Metow Valley. Normally, I would do that as part of my handyman business. That was just like a little bonus where I give people a list of things on their property to take care of. And then there's extended zone. So I think it's kind of important. There's two sites that I think you guys should write down. One is firewise.com. They have this for you. Also, oh, my mind's going blank, a little nervous. But anyway, I'll remember afterwards when I go home. I will make these available to whoever wants them. I just, I care about you guys, care about, you know, your livelihood here. I think all CERT members become CERT members because we do care. And there's always openings for new people. So thank you. Thank you for your time. And thank you for letting me help these people.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven, to public hearing. Implementing the master plan code 18.30, this will be a first touch. So the pub subject again is the, let's see, fee amendment for the master plan 18.30. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Lindsay Zamel, Community and Economic Development Director for the city of Squim. Mayor and councilors, I do need to apologize. There was a typo. This is not first touch. As you may recall, I was at the last meeting where you had directed me to come in for public hearing. The agenda cover sheet is accurate for everything else besides the fact that it's states first touch. So tonight, we will be holding a public hearing on the fee amendment. This is adding a fee for the permit type of a master plan. That is in 1830 under our zoning code as a permit that can be applied for. As I was following process, I recognized that there was not an associated fee or an application. We've got the application form created upstairs and are working on the fee process tonight. I'm available if you have any questions. Prior to the public hearing opening, I will state that we copied the fee format and process similar to the fee of a major subdivision as the same amount of analysis, review, and detail go into master plan applications. Thank you.
Questions?
Question of clarification. Who's paying these fees again? This is a developer, not a developer. If further, for the record, for the benefit of folks listening in, who pays this fee that we're putting together?
Correct. It would either be the property owner that is interested in developing their property or a third party that they have hired to go through the permitting process. So it is actually the applicant. It can that can be either the property owner or a third party hired by the property owner.
Any other questions? All right, go ahead and move on to public comment. And this will be, as this is a public hearing, audience members wishing to make comment will be allotted three minutes to speak. When is your time to speak? Please give your name, address, and whether you reside within the city of Squim. Please avoid repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. The city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support the use of hate speech or offensive language. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the by the public do not reflect the city's values. City clerk, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak?
And no one has signed up to for public comment on this topic.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the hearing. Is there any further council discussion? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we can move to council action.
I move to adopt the ordinance that is yet to be numbered with exhibits amending SMC Chapter 3.68.060, adding a new fee type for master plan permit applications for SMC 18.30.
I second that motion.
It's moved and seconded. Anything further? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Give Counselor Butler just a minute here to get set up.
Thank you for the link.
Thank you for the link to be able to join online. So I actually listened to that discussion and I came in. I thought I had time to vote, but you all passed it anyways. Thank you, go ahead.
Consent agenda. Just for clarification, I don't suppose you were able to hear the motion before you came in?
About the ordinance.
For the, yeah, for the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Got it.
All right, items on tonight's consent agenda. Claims voucher, claim vouchers totaling $1,541,907.13. City council meeting minutes from July 22, 2024. Lodging tax advisory committee minutes and grants. And the rebuilding America infrastructure with sustainability and equity, the RACE contract.
Motion to approve.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Motion didn't approve, seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to general business, 9A, Q2 2024 financial report.
Good evening, council. Sue Hager, Administrative Services Director. Probably need to apologize about the quantity of materials you had in your Q2 financial report. Same materials that I report to you every quarter. Narratives on how all of the funds are doing. Some summary graphs. I also did a presentation. So I'm here to answer any questions. And once I'm finished answering questions, I just want to draw your attention to some budget amendments that may or may not be coming your way later this year. So first, I'll take any questions for you.
Any questions?
Okay. So as you saw in the materials, we had a few funds that were overbalanced year to date. So as of June 30th, they hadn't expended all of their appropriations for the year, but there's something that we're keeping an eye on. Number one is the general fund. And that's primarily due to our Washington City's Insurance Authority annual assessment, which came in about $107,000 higher than I expected. So again, I'm watching the performance of that. And again, that WCIA insurance assessment filters out to all of the funds, like water and sewer, that are responsible for, for some of the claims. So that might be one budget amendment. The second budget amendment is, I don't know if you understood the discussions that I had regarding development-related revenues and expenditures. We have some very large developments happening right now. And typically, those revenues and those expenditures are difficult to predict. So for example, Rolling Hills, we received in November $126,000 in permit revenue for that one development. And in 2024, we spent about $90,000 on on-call engineering services that helped us do our site construction permits. So do you see that there's a real wonkiness in your revenues and your, and your expenditures related to development? And it really can distract you from the regular operations that's happening in general fund. And so I talked with our previous public works director as well as the management analyst. And what I'd like to propose for a budget amendment later this year is pull all of that noise out of the general fund and stick it in its own fund so we can track and monitor it more closely. We also want to see, are the revenues we're collecting, are they making up and recovering the costs of what we're expending in terms of those site construction, those site construction costs for us? So if we're able to pull out some of those revenues and some of those expenses, I can see that the general fund will kind of calm down before the end of the year. But that's one thing that we're thinking of. And also, you saw that we've got a really, really great, healthy general fund, fund balance. And if we have the opportunity, maybe replenish some capital funds for our park projects and/or street projects and/or city shop projects. Haven't decided that one yet. Perhaps re, reimburse the rainy day fund for some of the money that you approved spending on a future park purchase. So that's with respect to the general fund. Also, I wanted to call to your attention, you saw that beautiful VAC truck earlier in the year. You saw that beautiful camera van. Well, those were items, and they were big fat items in previous budgets. They were budgeted in 2022. They were purchased or ordered in 2022. Well, we just got them and we just had to pay for them. So what I'm going to propose is rolling forward unspent monies in the equipment reserves so we can adequately pay for those delayed arrival purchases. Does that make sense? Okay. And last but not least, water and sewer operations. Again, they were kind of hammered a little bit by that WCIA insurance assessment. So I'm watching those closely. And finally, we had over $2 million in North Squim Avenue street, bike lane, and sidewalk project costs this year. Was budgeted in the prior year. Again, I might need to roll forward some of those appropriations from the prior year. Anyway, it's kind of a wait and see right now, but you probably will see me in September talking about some of these things that I'd like to make sure are cleaned up. And that's really all I had for you tonight.
Sue, if I could ask you, as far as large developments, does Squim use TIFs, tax increment financing?
We do not. Those are highly complicated, highly complicated financing arrangements. Mr. City Manager, would you care to embellish on anything here?
That's a great question, Councilor Downer. And as you know, that's a new process that the state put in place so that cities could develop infrastructure around a specific project. And it does allow for bonding of, of a city identifying an area, et cetera. We can explain that process. So we, there's 12 communities in the state that have implemented that since the state allowed it or produced that statute. And we have talked, there's a consultant, that's all he does. And so we've talked to him about how to, you know, how to utilize that opportunity or not in our city for some of our developments and, and the timing of the, of our CIP and some of the developments coming. So the answer, the short answer is, no, we've never done it. The expanded answer is, other cities are doing it. It's, you gotta follow the rules and it's gotta make sense, arithmetic, you know, mathematically and whatnot. But we're looking at that, see if it's a fit.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Really briefly, thank you, Sue. Thank you, Sue. This document you, you created was very informative.
Oh, good.
Granted, I love the graphs. I love also the rating system with the stars.
I love, if you don't like words or numbers, you might like pictures. So I like to use, and I would say thank you again for your patience. And I know I didn't deliver the Q1 financials to you because we were in the middle of a computer conversion. So I appreciate your patience and as always, here to answer any questions that you have. So thank you, council.
All right, moving on, 9B, plot extensions, code amendment, be first touch.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Once again, Lindsay Zamel, Community and Economic Development Director. And this is a first touch. This is the final presentation of language that is currently being addressed through interim control ordinances that the city council has adopted. There was, it was identified that there was a conflicting language in two applicable areas of code for Platts that spoke to either two one-year extensions or one one-year extension. DCD staff, as well as the city's legal team, has worked through these codes, identified in the interim control ordinance, the appropriate measure as we worked through planning commission, and the code amendment process. There were, the planning commission held a public hearing. The Department of Commerce was notified for the required 60-day review period. And CPO was, determination of nonsignificance was issued last week. This will be ready to be considered in front of the city council in one of your September meetings while in advance of the expiration of the interim control ordinance. And that concludes staff.
Questions from council? If none, there is a motion.
I'll be happy to make that move to direct staff to schedule a public hearing and second touch on the matter in a regular manner for the September 9, 2024 meeting.
I'll second that.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. 9C, developer reimbursement agreements.
Evening, Mayor. Member city council. Tonight before you is, for consideration, is a revision of our developer reimbursement agreements and elimination of the current chapter 13.98, moving it to a new chapter 20.20. Essentially, what we're doing tonight is we're cleaning up an older code that was last touched in 2010. Since then, the state legislature has allowed us as local jurisdictions to act in the place of a developer. So when we do a new extension of a water, sewer, or street project, we can now establish a latecomers agreement where we can now get cost recovery for, for that work. A lot of utility work is a, if you build it, we'll take it over. Or we will build it when there's enough certainty that we're going to get cost recovery. With this, we're able to build the infrastructure with certainty that we're going to place that financial burden as appropriate on the, the lands that will benefit from the most. There was also some cleanup of language. There was some references in the old code about how the developers had to pay a fee based on XYZ when we already had a fee established in code. So we got rid of the conflicting language and cleaned it up and streamlined the process. With that, I'm available to answer any questions you may have on the proposed code.
Questions?
Do you anticipate any issues with this, with developers and contractors?
I do not. This is a process that is used quite successfully in other jurisdictions. When the developer has to, because of their work, do an extension or build a road, this gives them an opportunity to ask for a latecomers agreement where they can also now get cost recovery. We've had language since 2010. It just hasn't been very effective. No one has taken advantage of that. So we're thinking that by cleaning this thing up, making the process more transparent for the developers to understand how they can do cost recovery. And also, since it now can extend to streets, not just utilities, that we're expecting to see more interest in this.
And, and council, if I may add purposes of the record, Christina Nelson Gross, to Public Works Director, his point, sorry. Thank you, thank you. To Paul's point, right? We recently have the ability to do this ourselves. So that means that if we oversize something beyond the city's needs, we also have the ability to recoup some of that money that could be attributable to private developments if their project required it. So it's not just an outlay for us as well.
When I've encountered something where we've done this before in other organizations, I have found that the developers, when they come in and they find out the infrastructure is already in place and that all they have to do is contribute their proportionate share for it. One of the first things I want to ask is, how much is it? And the second thing is, can I write you a check? Because there's a couple of things that developers need. They need certainty. They need to know timing of permits and what the costs are going to be because they're both tied together. So if we do build something that's sized appropriate for the anticipated growth in that area, and we set up the latecomers agreement, the developers are saying, I don't have to do that. I don't have to figure that out. It's already done for me. I have to pay my share of it. And others will also pay the share of it. They like that. So what we're asking tonight is to waive the second touch on the matter and direct staff to present an ordinance on the consent agenda for the next available meeting, adopting the new code and eliminating the old code. You're welcome.
Anything further?
I move to waive the second touch on this matter and direct staff to present an ordinance on the consent agenda for the next available meeting.
Made and seconded. Any further? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, 9D, authorization for certain rentals at James Center for the Performing Arts Resolution.
Because I didn't introduce myself for the record the last time, I feel I need to, so the city attorney knows who I am. Again, this is Paul Bucic, the Public Works Director at the City of Squim. And my apologies for forgetting to introduce myself the last time. Tonight is the first step in a couple of different steps we want to undertake. The previous resolution and lease for the rehearsal center actually precluded the Squim band from acting as an agent on our behalf to do rentals. What we have been talking to the band about now is, we will establish the rates, because that's one of the things they wanted to do, which we cannot have them do. We will establish the rates and bring those forward at the same time as any contract agreement with them. And they will do the scheduling for the time in the rehearsal hall so that we don't have that obligation. It's a bit of a win-win because we're also looking at it. There's a way that they get, quote, credit hours in dollar value for the volunteers that use for doing that. Then we may not make a lot of money of it, but our biggest value we're getting is not having to have staff time, which we've estimated at least $43,000 to do the scheduling because it's a complicated scheduling that's going to go on out there. So the resolution before you right now basically allows the band to now act as our agent to do the scheduling and collect the fees on behalf of the city. The next thing we will do is we will come before you with the rates. And to let the cat out of the bag, we're looking at $10 an hour for, for profit, $5 an hour for nonprofit. And for the schools that are using it for educational programs in the arts, that would be at a zero cost. Assuming that those move forward, then the band would go forward and they would schedule the time blocks in there on an hour increments, collect the fees. And then, once a quarter, do a reconciliation with the city on how much money we get back, how much money they keep. If we keep nothing, then, you know, it's kind of a wash for us. We save on the staff time. That would occur through a contract with them. That would be a process, an operational process with us and the band. Do you, so the motion we're looking for. You have two options on this one. If you feel a second touch is necessary, then we can come back. But I think right now, I think I would request that we waive the second touch and come back with the proposed resolution, which is in your packet for final action at the next available meeting on consent.
Has everybody weighed in that might rent it? Excuse me.
Has everyone weighed in who might rent it?
The schools, the orchestra?
We have not approached the schools and the orchestra because the process is, the question is whether we do the scheduling or the band does the scheduling. That's, that's the question at hand.
But they have no authority to turn anybody away, correct?
Correct.
They have guidelines?
Correct. That will be a part of the contract agreement with them.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, they're, they are just basically acting as our agent for the scheduling.
Have a quick.
I have a quick question of, I'm not saying it would happen, but I am curious to know what would happen if the Squim City Band, for whatever reason, ends up not having the capacity to be able to schedule other entities. Does that make sense?
It does. It does. In fact, the contract agreement that we're envisioning with them, which we have not presented to them, but we have talked to them about this because we want to make sure this is something the council is interested in moving forward with before we go too much deep on it, would give them the opportunity to request to be released from it and then we would take it over. And vice versa, if we felt that things weren't going the way we would like to see them go, if there are problems, we would also cancel it with appropriate notice.
Thank you.
Welcome.
In the band administering the scheduling, how would people renting the facilities make payment? Would the band then issue an invoice and they would come here and pay at the, with the cashiers or who's handling the payments and the finances?
They would handle the payments and we've already been talking to them about the bookkeeping that they would need to do in order to meet our standards. And then Sue's been a part of the conversation with them. And moving forward, we'll make sure those are all detailed.
I might say those are really good questions and, but you can imagine, there's, there's bands that rent for 30 minutes and we would be tying an FTE up with the, with the phone calls, with the financial transactions, all for 30 minutes or even an hour or two. It's just massive, detailed, mundane scheduling and transactions that just, we're just interested in FTE, valuable FTE time doing and they've said they are interested in doing that, so.
Yeah, we did a quick math on it that if the cost recovery on this, at best, would be about $4,000 or $5,000 over the course of the year because they, they have a half of the time already booked. So it just didn't seem to make a lot of sense that we're going to spend $43,000 in staff time or more to manage $4,500 to $5,000 of cost recovery.
I may have missed it, but so the 20-year, the lease is for 20 years, but it, it sounds like this next, I'm sorry, I'm trying. This contract is, thank you, this contract is not going to be for 20 years. This is a shorter term, renew every, I might have missed it. Was that specified?
It wasn't specified yet, but we're looking about every five years. And the reason why we don't want to do 20 years because things can change. So this is part of the conversation. If the band is most comfortable doing a one-year trial, then we'll look at a one-year trial with the opportunity to execute an amendment to the contract for additional four years or five years.
Sounds like there's a lot of great conversation going. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
I moved to direct staff to schedule a second touch on this matter in the regular manner. Excuse me, that's not, that's one I didn't want. I moved to waive the second touch on this matter, direct staff to present the proposed resolution on the consent agenda at the next available meeting.
And I will second that.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, 9D, Metropolitan Park District Research Update.
One moment, will I make sure I get the right PowerPoint presentation to bring up for you? There we go. I don't know how much detail you would like me to get into on this because we, I, I put forward the audio version of this to go forward. Why is that not showing up? I'm sharing it. One second. Oh, wait, there it was. There you go. There we go. So my question to you before I get into this too much is, how much do you want me to talk about this? How many have had an opportunity to review the audio overview of this whole presentation? And then would you like me just to go straight to the summary conclusions or would you like to talk about some of the slides? I'm getting some thumbs up. So I'm going to slide to the end and cut to the chase. And the chase basically is, is that creation of a Metropolitan Park District, we believe it does require more extensive evaluation by the city and county others to move forward. Reminder that when you establish a Metropolitan Park District, it can either cover all of the city. It can cover the city and parts of the county. Basically, it can cover almost anything that the district needs to cover. What it also does though is when you form a Metropolitan Park District, it is a separate legal municipal entity. As such, it is no longer under the purview and the control of the City Council or to some degree, the community of only the City of Squim. If in fact, it is going to cover more than just the City of Squim and it extends out into the unincorporated Clalow County area, however wide it is, there needs to be interlocal agreements between all the entities and a vote at the same time for all of the individuals who be a part of that district. When that happens, then usually what you see is that two people are appointed by the City Council, two people are appointed by the County Council, usually as counselors. But the fifth person is an elected person who will run for that fifth seat. And that is usually anybody at large who lives either in the unincorporated or the city itself. One of the pros, if you will, is that it establishes a stable funding source for all of the parks' features within the Metropolitan Park District. One of the cons, others will look at it, is it's a permanent tax. It doesn't go away. The oldest one in the state of Washington is the City of Tacoma Metropolitan Park District. It was formed in 1907. It's been successful, but it's also, only encompasses the city of Tacoma. So they only have to deal with Tacoma residents. One of the other things about a Metropolitan Park District is if it extends, well, even if it's just in the city, but extends out in the Clalow County, the expectation is all the park assets the City of Squim has currently would be transferred over to the Metropolitan Park District. That means all the parks would go to them. We would no longer, though, need to collect a park impact fee because we would no longer be responsible for those parks. One of the greatest challenges with formation of a Metropolitan Park District is getting out the vote, getting people to tax themselves. It requires 50% plus one. In other words, 50% of the vote plus one person. All it takes is a simple majority. And once it's established, then it is now a new taxing district. The disadvantage of not having or having a Metropolitan Park District that's just in the city limits is we're taxing ourselves, our own residents are taxing themselves. It's a stable funding source, but we still have the same challenge where people who live in unincorporated Clalow County are coming and using the facilities. So if you're thinking about using this as an opportunity to get other people to help pay for it, then you really need to go and think about, we need to think about going outside the city limits. I will tell you that the Park District Number One, SARC, attempted in 2015 to have a levy and it failed. Nobody wanted to increase their, their taxes on that one. That Park District Number One does exist. It only supports the YMCA. It is a senior taxing district to any Metropolitan Park District that is formed. So things get a little bit hinky if that still exists and the Metropolitan Park District is formed because they have the opportunity anytime to go out for a new levy to support things they need to do like improving the YMCA or other things. And if it gets voted yes, then the Metropolitan Park District revenues go down accordingly because we have a limit on what we're allowed to collect in the area. There's a number of things about a Metropolitan Park District that if you read through and listened to it all, you see that it has a lot of control. It has the ability to annex. It has the ability to have its own staff. It has the ability to have its own retirement or to tie into the state's retirement system. It is truly another municipal government. Not bad, not good, just is. So it is a significant lift. There's not a great deal of certainty of success if we move forward with it, but that's what a lot of things in life are. I will tell you though, that with the demographics in the community and the surrounding communities, it's going to be challenged to convince them that they need to impose on a new tax on themselves to take care of what in some people feel is already being taken care of, which is the park system within the City of Squim. We do not currently have the staffing levels that I feel are necessary for us to move forward with this effort and we will need to hire some consultants. At a minimum, we need consultants to help us with some public outreach. We need to craft a message for those who live not only in the city, but outside of the city that it's important to them and that it's valued to them to tax themselves for a new Metropolitan Park District. With all the consideration on this slide and everything up, up ahead of this, before this slide, we talked about this extensively internally. We took a look at the work that was done in 2015 by city staff at that time. The same issue came up from the council. And we agree with the conclusion that occurred at that time, which is not at this time. Pursuit of a Metropolitan Park District doesn't make a lot of sense for us at this time. I don't know when it will, but at this time right now, it doesn't make a lot of sense. But that's just our recommendation.
And I believe our conclusions were based not so much on wondering if you'd get the vote or not, but, but if for any reason that metropolitan bar, boundary included anything other, if it's the city only, then you all are the controlling board. Anything other than that, we lose as a city, the part, all of our parks to an independent entity. And even you don't, you don't have anything to say about that. So knowing it's the heart of our city and kind of a very passionate thing that we promote, we just felt like to give that up would be, you know, would need to be a very thoughtful thing. So that's why we came up with the conclusion that it didn't feel right at all. So we can answer more questions about that as well, but it was a lack of control in giving up so much of what we've worked for to buy and to, to build and to, and to develop for our residents to some other independent board.
My biggest concern when you were asked to bring all of this research back, my biggest concern was sustainability. And I wasn't sure how in population of 8,000, one, I didn't think that they'd want to impose a tax on themselves. But two, I wasn't sure if that kind of tax base would be able to sustain a Metropolitan Parks District. And so I was wondering, in all the research that you did, did you feel like there was a certain, like, minimum threshold of population or does that not matter so much?
One of the things about, about formation of a district, there are limits on the amount of funds on the tax rate that they can accumulate, that they can, they can charge. We did not dive into the detail to see within the City of Squim what that would translate to on a dollar value on an annual basis. I think that to make it really work, you would want to extend it out into the county area a fair amount. Okay, look, it's just a little bit slow, but it's doing what I asked it to do. Okay. Okay, so let's just look real quick at, if I can get it to speed up. There we go. So here's the city limits. You can see it's, it's not large. We all know how big our city is. We've got 8,200 people. We're going to have more in the future. The City Council could act as the city manager indicated, as the, the board. There would be standing meetings separate from the City Council meeting. That would be necessary because it's kind of like the old pirates have. You've got three different points on it. You need to rotate it on because now you're holding, you're, you're in a new hat. You're operating in a different municipal jurisdictional act. And then we looked at the potential of the Squim School District Boundary. That's a very large area. But think about how we need to message to get 50 plus one, 50% plus one vote on a positive. And the larger the area you get, like the Miller Peninsula to East Port Angeles, this is, this is a extremely large area. So it means it's even harder to convince people the further away from the City of Squim that they need to tax themselves to pay for things that they will view primarily as park functions within the city limits. Now, if we had a master plan that showed how we were going to do parks all over the place and the Park District, Metropolitan Park District was going to be able to implement it, then people, it's my opinion, people look at that and say, yes, I'm getting something out of it. I wouldn't propose something as wide as this to East Port Angeles because how many of those people actually come here in the first place and are going to view this as an asset that they want to, they want to help fund? Okay, now it's just toying with me because it's moving all on its own.
Thank you, Paul. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Yes.
In addition to control that you were both speaking of, what about finances? Would we no longer have a Parks and Recreation Department? Would we no longer collect park impact fees on new builds? Would we hand over the amount of tax money that we take in for our city taxes and put towards parks?
All very good questions. Let me see if I can just kind of get to a couple of them. I think you'll be expected that our, our park assets, all of our parks, would go to the Metropolitan Park District. I think that for sure, we would no longer have a park impact fee because we wouldn't have parks. They would be under the Metropolitan Park District. So we would no longer charge that. That would essentially be replaced by the overarching tax that the Metropolitan Park District would charge everybody. And then the general fund would no longer need to support the, the parks. Maybe you want to contribute to the Park District, maybe not. Those, those financials haven't been worked out. As far as staffing goes, the Metropolitan Park District could absorb the staff or we could repurpose them to different functions or we could decide that we no longer need those positions. Those are all things to be worked out in the future, but we would, if it included parts of Clalow County, it would be unlikely that we would see that we would continue to have the staff funded by our general fund. They might be funded by the Metropolitan Park District to some degree or entirely up to the board for the Metropolitan Park District. And that's where if it's outside the city limits, you lose that control. Because now you're going to have two people from the county, one elected person from at-large, could be a city, could be a county person, and then two people potentially from, from in the city limits, two of you, if that's what you choose to do so. So you, you do lose a lot of operational control and decision-making. The, the parks have done a lot of master planning already. We've made some great strides and we have plans moving forward for all of our park facilities right now. Yes?
So does that, if hypothetically, the Metropolitan Park District was created, what would the Sunshine Festival look like? We would have to rent Carrie Blake from the Metropolitan Park District?
Well, it wouldn't be ours anymore.
Right. Yeah, okay, thank you. That's kind of where I was heading with that. That sounds really odd. Thank you.
You're welcome.
When you mentioned people that use our parks that don't actually live in Squim, I don't really have a problem with that. I've lived in two larger cities where if you were asked, you had to show ID to use a park. And I don't ever want to see that happen in Squim. I think it's ridiculous and it excludes people unnecessarily. I would not like it to come to that.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
There are other models too, for certain high-intense use features that require us to keep up on them on a regular basis. Some, some entities have, because they have a park and rec program where they Some, some entities have, because they have a park and rec program where they have a fee to pay. So you can use all the parks, that's not a problem, but if you're using one of the features that has a high demand, you have a set rate for city residents and a different rate for the people who live outside the community, because that way they're helping to fund the maintenance of it, the resurfacing of it, the new nets of it, whatever it may be. So there are other avenues to look at on how to fund our, our parks, features that need the money.
But I don't ever want to exclude people that can't afford it. I think that's what's so nice about Squim is all the wonderful parks and free things to do for older people like me, or people with little kids. You know, it's a huge spectrum of people that use the parks.
I, I understand.
Brandon, just internal conversation. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
This is terrific presentation. Am I recalling that you had particular interest in this topic? Is that where this has kind of come from? And if so, if, I appreciate getting your feedback on this.
But just as a thought on, like I said, we have somebody park features coming online that need to be either, you know, updated, or new parks coming online, just the way to fund all these things. So it's just one option to, hey, look at if this was a viable way to go. So, you know, to me, and obviously the staff, it's not looking at a viable way, you know, at least at this time. So that's just the way, like I said, this is so many things that the parks are, you know, coming up this, you know, you know, some other way, other, you know, instead of relying solely on, you know, grants and stuff like that, is there another way that we can look at, another avenue?
Right. I appreciate that kind of generative processing. So having heard this presentation, do you have any ongoing concerns, or is this sort of answer your, the question you were hoping would get answered?
Well, it's not the outcome that I would have liked, you know, but, but I agree, losing control is probably one thing that I would not like. But going back to the joint board again, you know, unfortunately, something we might have to do.
Sure. Thank you.
And the good news for council is that I think we're done purchasing parks. I think we've kind of, well, we're not overdone, but we are done. Like, we have the right square footage for our, our residents and our surrounding communities. And now almost everything will go into develop, well, everything will go into development. And we're really excited about ramping up and expediting, kind of accelerating the development of what we now have. So that's a good thing, because it's expensive to buy parks, but you all have been very supportive of that. And so now let's start using the parks, and that means development, so.
I have a quick operations question. You guys put on so many presentations for us, and I really appreciate the time and effort that you put into them. And so I'm curious if a presentation like this can be used for future councils.
Absolutely.
Cool. So all the effort you put into it wasn't for nothing.
In another eight years, when you come back and ask for another evaluation of a MPD, we'll be happy to resurrect this, or someone will.
I have a question, thinking about what's happening in the Parks Department. I'm so grateful that we've been able to re-assign, or hire from within and promote and have staff members step into new roles to free up other staff members to do the important work of developing master plans and moving our park system forward in a really important way. And I'm sure we would have received some update, but maybe you're going to talk about it in your, in your city manager update, but any, any news about how that's going, finding a replacement for the new position?
I do have that in my city manager.
Then we'll hear from you later.
We have lots of applicants and some exciting, yeah, we're moving forward for sure, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moved on reports, says none in the youth liaison, but do you have anything?
We are? Okay. Purpose of the record, this is Georgia Bullard. And yes, I do have some things for the youth liaison report. We've both been gone this past month on vacation, summer travels, et cetera. But next time city council meets, school will be in session. School is starting on the 28th of August, so much more, much sooner than it has been these past few years. Fall sport, fall sports are starting two days before on the 26th, so that they can get started on that. And then the Squim School Pro, Squim High School Program has a great program called, sorry, guys, I'm really tired, I just got back from Wyoming. But Squim School District has a program called Link Crew, where you pair up two upperclassmen, either juniors or seniors, with incoming freshmen at the high school to essentially mentor a group of about 12 kids and provide them with guidance throughout their high school years. These students will stick with them throughout the first semester of their high school career, telling them advice, homework help and whatnot. And these kids, it's a group of about 30 upperclassmen, have meetings on the 21st and 27th of August to prepare for school starting.
Is this a new program?
No, this program has been going on since 2001. We actually were the first school to start it in the Upper Washington State area.
So yeah. So it's successful.
It's been going for a while. It's very successful.
That's amazing. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
City manager.
Yeah, thank you for being here on summer break. That's very nice. And we, you'll be glad to know that council is moving forward with giving you a compadre in our organized way, so, and will recruit you to recruit for them, or maybe not. Oh, is, oh, is, oh, is that the right? Oh, I'm sorry, mixing you two up. Okay, my bad. Sorry, I'll get back to my report here. So a couple of things. Last time we met, I was sad to acknowledge that we were losing a couple of key people, but I'm also happy to present to you tonight that Fred Liddell is our acting interim IT manager and has joined us here tonight and doing a great job, meeting with him closely. We have 36 applicants, and we have an IT consultant helping screen that on a IT level, and then we're, we're moving forward as fast as we can. And I think you may have seen an email from our city attorney's office, which is where our clerk's office is located, and you know that Heather has accepted the role of acting clerk, so. Very exciting. All of us are very excited about that, so. Moving on to communications, we are narrowing in on a survey using our same vendor that we used for this, the resident survey last year. They also are known for doing business surveys around the country, and so we're narrowing in on our questions with that, working with the chamber and some of our employers in town to get the right questions to ask. So we look, it looks like we'll be, that will be our third and probably last group to survey. I call them my three customers, right? My employees, residents, and then businesses. And so it'd be nice to hear from them right before Christmas, and so we can bring that back to you as, as we move forward with that.
I have a quick question about those surveys. How often do you plan to implement those?
So the employee one, we have continued to do annually, and that's been well received. I might as well tell you now that we, the last time I was here, we had 55% participation rate, but we still had a week to go. The, the first year we did it, we had 84% participation rate, which was unheard of, and they thought, hmm, that's a little suspicious, but maybe you just have really engaged employees, and you're not paying them to take the test or something else. So that was the case. They said, it'll be hard to keep that up unless you really prove to your employees that it's of value to them to fill it out. And so it was very important. I mean, that was the whole point, is to listen to them, and they, enough of them saw that we were listening to them and putting action to their comments or to what they thought we could process improve. And so the second year, we had 84 again, and that's really high. So this year is like, oh, what, how do we keep that number up? And I'm pleased to report that we got 87%. So it's a little, you know, you get to so high, and it's like, okay, this, you can't, it's not sustainable. But I, what it really tells us is everybody trusts that, that if they, if they talk to us, we're listening, and, and so why would you not participate? Because if you want something changed, you better participate. So, yeah, feeling really good about that. Thank you for asking, yeah. So let me keep moving down here. Lindsay from the DCD Department wanted me to report. Some of you may have seen her at the farmer's market this past Saturday. She and some of her staff, they had a big booth there to talk about the comp plan and to get input from the public. It's kind of part of, part of that public outreach calendar and events. And she said it was fairly busy, and she got some good participation there, so I just wanted to share that with you. And then at the last planning commission meeting last week, they had a public hearing on the manufactured home parks. And so that went really well. They will, they have their next meeting this coming Tuesday on August 20th. They will be forming recommendations based on that public hearing to bring back to you, to counsel from all that. So the, in the public hearing, there was only, I think, one comment, maybe two, and they were about, you know, a minute or two, and all they were, were thank you so much for listening and for putting all this work in. There was really not any, really, you know, Doug Wright was kind of their spokesman and just super supportive and appreciative of all the work that the city's put into listening to them. So you'll be seeing a recommendation from the planning commission on that. Getting to the human resource report, as you asked, we continue to recruit for a lot of positions. One is for an assist, an associate or assistant planner in the DCD Department. We still have two officers, police officer vacancies. To your question, Council Anderson, we had 39 applicants. Was that you? No, I mean, there's harmony. Yeah, it was harmony. We had 39 applicants for the position that we opened up because EJ moved up, and, and so they narrowed that down to seven finalists and are just doing the second interviews and whatnot on those. So thank you for asking and really excited about the quality and number of applicants and candidates there, so, yeah. And like, I think I already told you about the IT manager. So very soon, based on the email you saw from Christina today, they'll be posting that legal assistant position as well. And finally, I think I mentioned last time, but the non-uniform labor negotiations began today, and so you'll be having a work session and getting some guidance on that. Two things from the police department. One is based on the community survey response that we received from our residents, the police department has been taking again a proactive step toward what we heard from them about increasing traffic safety and positioning, and so they have significantly increased their presence in traffic stops and whatnot, and doing a lot of education that way. So again, we ask, we listen, and then we try to put action behind that. So I want to thank our police department for that and let you know that. And then, and then our P, our PD department will have a recruitment booth at the Clallum County Fair starting next week, so. Is that next week? Is it this week? Wow, okay, thirsty. Thank you. From Public Works, the WRF received their fifth consecutive outstanding performance award from the Department of Ecology, and so that was really big. There's only 118 out of 300 departments that get that, so, you know, a little Squim, you know, bravo to them. We submitted a FEMA grant this week for 800K, $800,000 for a microgrid emergency powers system down at the Guy Cole, and so we'll hopefully hear back from that. But it was, it was really great grant that they pulled together in very short time. So thanks to Mayor and Megan for that. Megan, yeah. And, and then I think you received the email from Paul relative to West Quin Bay and some of the things that are happening out there. I think they've reposted the sign, they've restriped it, working on that a little bit more, and there'll be, there'll be a formal report from, from Paul soon, but he, he did receive that, find that report and is working his way through that. Will be taking some final steps out there, so. I believe that's it for me. Any questions?
Just, do, I realize it's probably not in our jurisdiction, but maybe we know. You mentioned West Quin Bay, and they've moved now the, the work on the overpass, the fish process, salmon process to Johnson Creek, so right there at that intersection. Is by any chance that going to include the, the thought about, roundabout?
So it's not, but there's, there's a lot of discussion, and actually, Paul, who's, you know, a 38-year seasoned engineer, what we got through the legislature a couple of years ago, we're just trying to keep there, and because it keeps wanting to slide down, and so we keep moving it up. But, but Paul, I should maybe give him the mic, but he has come up with a nice way to perhaps separate that into two things, so that we can keep it high, and so let's get the exchange done for sure, while we continue to work on the access road and decide how to best do that. We made a presentation that got funded or got, you know, approved by the legislature, but there may be some process improvement and some redesign there, but we're, that's still in the works, so, yeah. Thank you for asking.
Anything else?
Thank you.
City council reports.
I'd like to give an update on WASELI, the Washington Collaborative Elected Leaders Institute, and I just noticed I left my binder over there. Okay, so on, on Friday, July 26th and Saturday, July 27th, the first session of WASELI happened. And again, it's put together, or it's organized and offered by the Association of Washington Cities in partnership with the William D. Ruckelhaus Center, which is a collaboration between Wash, the Uni, Washington State University and the University of Washington and the Evan School of Public Policy and Governance. It was incredible session. There's a group, it's a group of about 40, it was about 40 to 50 people from all over the state, counselors and the staff from the William D. Ruckelhaus Center and Evan School. And I have the agenda, and they gave away a book at the first session by Jim Ellis, A Will to Serve: Stories of Patience, Persistence, and Friends Made Along the Way. Some of the common themes was that we're all coming together as servant leaders with the intention of improving the civic health of our state by engaging with the concepts of building community and, and having healthy discussion in an academic way. And one of the activities was a pro-action cafe. They led us through the activity and encouraged counselors that, to take it back to their community. And basically, the pro-action cafe in my mind is what we were doing in Guy Cole with the, with the comp plan. That basically was a pro-action cafe, where you get folks together, you make teams, you talk about issues, you get, you know, everybody's got sticky or paper to write on and take notes, and it was, it's just amazing stuff. So in our proact, when we did the pro-action cafe, so again, I'm, I'm serving, I'm honored to represent Squim, I'm on, engaging in WASELI with Drew Schwab from the Port Angeles City Council. And in our team, we, the, in the pro-action cafe, the way it was organized, they had counselors pick topics that were very important to them. So there was everything from waste management to affordable housing. That's the topic that, that Drew and I selected, and the counselors from, what was it? Duval. The counselor team from Duval also selected affordable housing. So we went around, so all of the teams made, all the counselor teams made what they call, so this was our pro-action cafe conversation harvesting space. And so it was this guided process, and then everyone went around the room and, and spent time in each station, giving their, trying to define what the problem is, what is missing, and then what is the next step. So we went in three rounds, and then we're, this is the poster that we created, the Duval folks have a picture of it. She was like, just take the original. She was like, just take the original. I was like, yes, visuals. And so, yeah, some really great conversation pieces. I highly recommend you all come and take a look at this because there's like 50 elected or 40, I'm not, I'm going to say approximately 40 elected officials spent some time putting the content onto this poster. So come take a look. And I have my notes and I've been doing a lot of camping and summer recreation, so I haven't digitized my content and sent it to you all yet, but I did promise that I would give you the Cliff Notes edition. So there it is, WASELI, session one, and that's a wrap.
I think it was last Monday, we had a lodging tax advisory committee meeting and we, you know, passed the, on the consent agenda, the grants, but just happy to report that the lodging taxes are coming in above what's budgeted and that the hotels report that they are full on the weekends for the rest of the month of August. So we keep wondering about, when we talk about the VRBOs and capacity, you know, we also have to think about how we impact our tourism too. So really, I'm really enjoying that group of people. They're very knowledgeable. So I had something else, but I can't think of it now. I remember I wasn't able to attend the NDOC, NODC, I don't know if Megan was there, but I was in a conference.
No one else, we'll move on to 11A, council legislative agenda.
On my screen.
And maybe I can kick this off. So in the agenda planning meeting, we were under the impression that DeVore was going to be able to attend tonight. And since then, he has been recommitted to Pasco for, to meet with some legislators and including a dinner meeting and dinner and what all that. So he apologized and can't be here. However, as we've talked amongst ourselves, it may have been a little bit premature and he's hoping to have an actual work session with you to walk through, to have more of a dialogue. And so what you do, you'll see soon from Megan that we have created six, these are drafts, we'll probably narrow it down over the next couple of weeks. On the operation side, things that we think we need to legislatively ask for some financial support for operations. We know that you put this on your agenda so you all can talk amongst yourselves on the policy side. And once you develop kind of a draft like we have, then I think we would invite DeVore to come back in as soon as possible, then have 30 minutes or 45 minutes to talk with him and fine tune that, so.
With that, do you want to go ahead and talk about this document and how we got there? Thank you, Megan.
Yeah, just real quick. So I'm Megan Uker, resource analyst. And, yeah, this was not in your packet. This is draft, you'll see this going forward, but we just wanted to engage the council at this point as we develop the legislative agenda. Public Works, you know, bringing to you projects that we have prioritized both through our CIP process and a lot of other public input that we received from you. And then, of course, prioritizing a good fit for a legislative ask. Some of these things you saw on the previous, on the previous legislative agenda, actually for the last two years, per DeVore's recommendation, we've tried to keep our asks the same in many ways so that we are familiarizing our legislators with those. And, and then the process goes actually that we, we kind of, we talk with them about it and you all can talk with them about it. And then often they, there's something that they like or think would be a good fit for that year's budget. And then they invite us to apply for legislative funding. And that's how we got, for instance, the two years of park funding for Hendrickson. So that, that was the process there. So annually, they'll open up by invite this application for legislative ask. So again, we just have kind of drafted six ideas of things we'd like to ask for. The first one really isn't an ask, it's just asking for continued support of that interchange, the SIMDAR's US 101 interchange project that is in the transportation budget and we want it to stay there, starting design in 2025. So, so making sure that they remember to support that. And then West Quim Bay, the sewer extension lift station project, we're looking, we've for seven and a half million so, so that we can get that project fully constructed and also manage our sewer debt capacity so we're able to do, to do other projects as well. So that's why we're going out for legislative support. We can't take a full loan on that project. Otherwise, we, we really can't do our other, do other sewer projects over the next coming years. So we're looking for that outside funding. Our city shop project that you're familiar with, we've kind of done some value engineering. I know they're continuing to work on that. And we are hoping just to get the fuel station completed, designed and constructed with a million in outside support. So that would really be a top ask. That's, you know, would be a fuel station with backup generator that would be able to operate if there was an outage or some other emergency event. Right now, we reliant on the co-op that does not have an outside, you know, or a backup generator. And this would be something we could share with emergency responders. Our fire district supported a school district in this ask in the past since it could really be a vital, you know, link when, when power's out.
And I have a quick question about that.
Yeah.
So since the shop is a huge project.
Yes.
I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that we're going in phases, right? Hopefully, if we can get the funding for different phases, right? And so this year, the fuel station would be on the legislative ask for this year and hopefully we'd get funding so we could put the next phase onto next year's or the next cycles.
Something like that.
That's the goal.
Yes. That this, but this ask is just for the fuel station phase of $1 million for design and construction.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah. And then Centennial Place Park Development, you're probably familiar that we did put in a grant application, or we're finishing one up, really. It's been a, it's a multi-phase process, but for a phenomenal design, it's Centennial Place Park to make that sort of a gateway entrance, you know, welcoming green space into Squim. We think it would just be amazing there, especially as Jamestown is developing the campus across the street. And, I mean, it would, it just would really be the heart of downtown as it always has been, but, you know, make it a notable place. So we're asking for one and a half million, that would be the match for the grant that we asked for. So that would be an amazing ask there. And then a couple of transportation projects, you know, speaking of a lot of the transportation priorities that you folks mentioned today, the ninth, South Ninth Avenue Connectivity Project, again, is getting some sidewalks in on Ninth. Paul mentioned it earlier. And so we are, you know, we did throw in an application to TIB, but we are also looking at a legislative ask and, and getting that in front of our legislators because you don't always know if you're going to get those grants. And then a bigger project, but very related is again, South Squim. I know you mentioned that today and some of that walkability, multimodal transportation, you know, that vision has been, I think, with the city of Squim for a long time and the transportation master plan, as well as there was a South, South Squim Complete Streets Report done in 2020. And now we're hoping to really start to move forward with that and look at maybe Prairie Street is, I think, kind of been the main candidate to develop an east-west corridor connecting sort of economic opportunity areas on either side of our street, but with multimodal transportation that we really can't fit on Washington Street as well. And again, bike lanes, road in places sometimes where it doesn't exist, so really connecting that all the way from Ninth and beyond along there in South Squim. So that's a bigger project, a bigger ask for seven million, but it's a long overdue again to get pressure off of Washington and really have a, you know, kind of increase the walkability of those neighborhoods and, and, you know, make those some nice places to be. So those are the, what we're putting forth so far and welcome any questions or input on those potential asks.
Those are all draft and, and DeVore sent me an email last week and based on your conversation and probably the next, he, he's actually Steve Theringer, who's controls the budget in the House, has said, why don't you and Matt come over and meet me in Port Townsend where he lives and to see what he thinks the budget might look like this coming year, blah, blah, blah. So we're trying to, you know, grease the skids and do what we can to, I think this will be, we'll probably drop one or two of these based on those conversations with our senator or representative. Yep. But I believe this is on the agenda for you all to talk about policy and I forwarded you and Nola's, some of their policies, but whatever else you want to do, I think we'll be quiet. This is just us letting you know what we're doing on our side.
Okay. Kathy?
You're not hearing anything that the SIMDAR's bypass may not happen, right? Um, not I. Okay. That's a really important project for Squim.
Yeah, that's, that's a concern. So what the problem with that is they're up against deadlines for, you know, fish replacements and all of that, and they're at capacity and they can't, they won't even meet the federal mandate on that. So to come back and put a on-ramp on for economic development and safety and whatnot, that's, that's just, they're maxed out. And so we met with them and said, well, if you can't do it, at least the design and the engineering, can we? And we'll just, we'll, we'll hire the consultant. Like, we, we care about it more than WashDOT cares about it. And since it's hot right now, high in the queue, I basically said, let us take it on. We'll hire the consultants if you'll pay for it and we'll just pass it through, but at least it will be moving rather than waiting for WashDOT to ever get around and do it. And we don't have the capacity in our little engineering department. So Nick has met with the tribes, with the county, with Port Angeles, with some outside consultants, all those, to see if they want to participate and if not, and, and even if so, to what degree. And we'll hire consultants to make up that gap. And WashDOT has supposedly agreed to that, at least to the 30% completion rate. Now, I don't know, I don't know if you want more of an update than that, is that about it? Or do you want to, is there other concerns that you want? Or anyway, so that's what I know about it. So it's, we're trying to keep it moving forward at this point.
That's why we have it on the legislative agenda.
Yeah, you got to keep it on.
Just to continue to push it forward.
This affects so many people, especially people to safely get in and out of Palo Alto, Happy Valley. We need, and I know it's not Squim and even Diamond Point, you're taking your life in your hands to turn left or right.
Yeah. And, and that's, that is part of the original presentation. It was all one, but I think we can, we may be breaking that into if WashDOT will allow us to, you know, to, to get the bypass done while we continue to re-engineer or consider it, a re-engineering of the, the access road. But the point is, we got to keep it moving, that we got to keep it funded and being developed. So looks like Paul has some comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to make an observation that the implementation of the on and off ramp at SIMDARs is not really an issue. It's a pretty straightforward engineering solution. Takes a lot of dirt, will make it work. The greater concern is the frontage road and there's existing wetlands and a creek and a bunch of other things that need to be looked at carefully. Story is that mitigation for the frontage road was done already. We don't need to worry about it, but that was all done in the late 1990s and codes and regulations have changed. Status of habitat has changed, mitigation requirements have changed. So we're in conversations with the State Department of Transportation a little bit to see if we can have the project done in two phases. The first phase is the straightforward. The second phase is some form of a, a different access points off of Happy Valley and Palo Alto. Just today, I got a copy of what they had proposed to build back in 1998, but did not get built. And it actually takes Palo Alto and brings it up over the hill, which the DOT owns, and it ties in at the same location as Whitefeather Way. Now, Whitefeather Way is also going to be an access point for the Harper Town 600-plus or thereabout homes that are going to need to access 101 through there too. So there's more that we need to think about. And I would like to say that we need to revisit the idea of putting a roundabout that location because it'll be safer not just for 101, but also people in Palo Alto and Whitefeather. And I understand that there were a lot of people who don't like roundabouts and basically pushed the Department of Transportation away from roundabouts even just a couple of years ago. But we also know that they are continuing to build roundabouts along 101. And where I'm, I have driven through them down, heading towards the Hook and Out Bridge, it's working, it's working very well. So there's all the different kinds of alternative roundabouts that can be implemented. So that's why I would like to do it in two parts. The first part, which is let's do the on and off ramps at SIMDAR straightforward while we revisit the idea of how we can make Happy Valley, Palo Alto, Whitefeather work and work effectively. Yes.
I'm sorry, did you say that in 1998, the project that they had proposed was to take Palo Alto over Highway 101?
No, 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 I'm sorry. In that area, they bought like 400 feet of right of way. So when you're coming down Palo Alto, going towards 101, one of the challenges is you can't see up 101 because you got the hill right there to your left, right? Well, their plan was to intercept Palo Alto much further up away from 101 and drive it through the forest and tie it back in where Whitefeather comes out.
So.
So it's a complete rerouting of Palo Alto.
Interesting. So there, okay, yeah, I'm looking at Google Maps on my surface right now, just trying to wrap my head around this. So it'd be hypothetically, the end of Palo Alto Road would be, would, it would stop accessing Highway 101?
Correct.
And then there would be a new road that they would construct off of Palo Alto to connect with Whitefeather?
Correct. I just, I just, it was just given to me, one of my engineers did some digging and research and said, hey, by the way, this is what they had proposed in 1998. So we have work to do.
That is serious work in progress. I, I wouldn't want the public to think that we're making any statements on that.
Correct. I'm right there with you. I'm just trying to follow your, follow you down the path here mentally. That's fascinating. And it sounds like, again, it is completely a work in progress and nothing is, yes.
Correct. However, we want to get.
Good hot thought exercise.
We want to work with State Department of Transportation so we can hire a resident engineer to manage the consultants doing the work for the on and off ramp. We have basically three engineers, one who is not on maternity leave and one who is your city engineer, who this, this size of the project of this magnitude takes an awful lot of care and feeding. So we would need to hire someone who would act as our agent to manage the consultants who are doing the work and attend all the meetings with the State Department of Transportation because there will be a lot of them. So we're working on it.
And all that is part of the funding that the state gave us. So this is not an additional cost to, to us, it's a pass through.
One more question or just kind of observation. Hypothetically, then, the access road that everyone's talking about, would that hypothetically, we're talking on the south side of Highway 101, it would be like the extension of Brownfield Road to Happy Valley hypothetically?
Hypothetically, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Appreciate this thought exercise in complete hypotheticals and look forward to more conversation on all of this. Thank you. Hypothetically.
Counselor Lo, did you have a question?
My question, that got answered.
Okay.
Anything else? Great. All right. You're welcome. Yep. Look forward to continuing to talk with you guys on this and get something that we can all get behind, like your goal one.
And, and should you, should you use this time to come up with your own agendas, which I thought I heard in agenda planning meeting, then that when DeVore comes for a work session, you'll have some work to show and we'll have some work to. you'll have some work to show him, we'll have some work to show him and we can try to, you know, bring that all and integrate all that together.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you knew, but Heather.
Yeah, which is on the other side of.
Brandon sent Heather an email of our draft.
I saw a couple of them, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Which brings us to the other side of the paper. Which is our proposed legislative policy agenda. So some of these are carryovers from last year for the improved funding models for school capital projects, affordable housing legislation, the career and technical education, the CTE funding, program funding. I'm not sure if we still need that on there or how that's, so I'm waiting on feedback on that. Still supporting AWC and NOLA and from tonight, the supporting infrastructure funding on the state. But so looking for input or additions from council on what to add, change, subtract from this document.
I, I just wanted to add that, got an email today that this Wednesday, the 14th, at 8:00 AM on Coffee with Colleen will be a presentation by Ned Floater on the CTE program that might be interesting to listen into.
Yeah. Do you know, Matt, about if we want to keep the CTE funding on, on this, or do you think we're okay for this year wise?
I don't know. I, if this is a policy document, that they have got, you've seen the $1 million donation. They also, that was in the paper, right? A local resident gave the school a million dollars for naming rights for their CTE facility. Also, I was, I should have put it in my city manager report. I was, Friday, I sent you all the announcement of the 35 million from the Derek Kilmer grant. It's called Recompute. And I was over in PA kind of accepting and part, part of that 35 million was to go towards the trades training. And so I, it's still, we're still have to receive the funds and I'm not sure exactly how much they'll get. That's, so it's still work in progress. They, I don't, I, I'm not sure if, what they need funding wise. Before they got the million dollars and they got the, the Recompute money, I heard they might be coming back to you for what you said was a, what was the right word, a pledge before that they then rescinded. But, uh, so I don't know if they're still in need of that or not. So.
I know we still have some time, so if you're able to, maybe since you've worked with them over there, see if you can give us a little bit more info on whether or not they're, they need some more help from the state or not, and we can keep this updated.
Absolutely. No, I gladly accept that invitation.
Any other counselors, again, have anything to add, change, remove?
I was pretty disappointed in the past legislation that decided to vote down the rent control effort. But I don't know if council would want to put it specifically on, like have it be its own topic on this page, or if it would just go under affordable housing legislation? Or if anybody else is even interested in having it on the.
I support that, your idea completely.
Okay.
To make it a separate topic? For, what was it again?
Uh, I think it was, yes, yeah, rent control.
Rent control or stabilization?
Both.
Both.
Ideally.
Our state legislators the year before that voted down giving a renter six months notice that their rent was going to go up. That, that I can't even wrap my head around. I don't know why they did that.
Okay, I'll make that its own separate topic. Anything else from other counselors? I guess we saw some time to hash it out, but the sooner Devois can get it, the better he can start chatting with Olympia. So. Get me ideas, stuff like that, and we'll make sure Devois gets it, so.
Thanks for aggregating the data. Really appreciate that, Brandon.
All right, if nothing else, 11B, Kathy, this one's yours.
Thank you, Brandon. When Mr. Stauffer told me about the difficulty in patrolling the church parking lot in that corner of Kerry Blake Park with people trying to set off fireworks and people who were setting off fireworks, we don't have any signs up. Nobody knows except the people that live here that you can't use fireworks. And I need to ask, start by asking our city attorney, can the city council ban the sale of fireworks?
The short answer to that is yes. But to give you a little bit of background, um, when this came before council, I believe in 2017 or 2018, the city council was approached with the idea of banning fireworks within the city for all of the reasons. They, that council at that time chose to do an advisory vote. The advisory vote said, yes, people were in favor. And so that is why the fireworks were banned, but the council at that time, against staff's recommendation, kept the ability for people to buy fireworks within the city because it supported, um, you know, small nonprofits and things like that, like, you know, if the Boy Scouts would sell fireworks or other things of that nature. And I didn't, I haven't had a chance to look at the municipal code, but my memory is that because we had this weird situation, and as far as I know, it's the only one in the state where you can do this. The, um, my memory is that our code requires there to be extensive signage on these, um, firework stands, clearly stating that fireworks are not allowed to be discharged within the city limits. So if they are not having signs, then that would be something, and I think Lindsay's gone home, that would be something that I would refer to for, for the fire marshal for code enforcement purposes. But yes, council can do that. There are some time restrictions and I don't remember exactly what they are off the top of my head, but there's something like, you know, um, if you change your code in this certain window, you have to wait a full year until like July 1. Okay, yes, Rachel is nodding. So yeah, there, there's, there's this weird thing where even if we were to pass it today, it's possible that it may not be effective for a year and a half. So.
So a quick tangent question, I guess. You mentioned the, if they're selling it in city limits, they should have had signs posted, right? That they can't light them. But a question, if they're selling them outside of city limits in the county, do you know off the top of your head if they should have signs posted then?
I can't speak to what the county regulations are. I do know that the county has been revisiting that. They've made some changes as well, but I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you what they are.
Okay.
And that is one of the issues, right? Is that we do have our little islands and our little pockets of areas that are actually county regulations, regulated by the county. So hopefully that gives the answer that you were looking for. Any other questions in history?
I would like to pursue this. If we have to wait a year and a half, no matter when we do it, we have to wait a year and a half. My, I am all for small business, but the business that was selling these is not even in Squim. So, no, the business that's selling the fireworks is a church from out of town.
And staff are happy to pursue that upon consensus from council?
Well, yeah, I would like to get three other counselors to agree with me that we should pursue it. I'm not going to waste the city staff's time writing an ordinance. So whose arm do I need to twist? Can I get three people? Okay, one, two, me? I need, how about one more person? Okay, a half a vote over here. Okay, thank you.
I'm okay with looking into it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so to be clear, the, um, the consensus is that staff to prepare an ordinance that bans this, or what, what is, I guess if we're looking into it, what does that mean?
An ordinance that bans the sale of fireworks within the city limits of Squim. And then we need to have a discussion on signage, whether or not that passes. We need to have signs in the parks where people bring the fireworks to, to set off that say that they can't do that.
Okay, so forgive my, um.
It's really two ordinances. The first one being passing it, having a discussion and passing it. The second would be an eventual discussion on signage to let people know from out of town.
Just park signage though.
Yes, because they come to Perry, Kerry Blake Park to watch the fireworks show and they bring fireworks with them.
Sounds like one's an ordinance and one's a procedural thing.
Well, and, yeah, yeah, okay. So that, that's, that's fine. I'm thinking too, how much enforcement could be an arm rather than having increased signage as well. But that's.
It would save, I'm trying to save the police department time. They answered a lot of calls. This year, it's, I've never been in a war, but I imagine that's what it would sound like. I don't know who was shooting them off in East Squim. It sounded like artillery. And they answered every single call and none of them were being set off in the city limits of Squim that I could hear from, from my house. But I'm saying if, if Mr. Stauffer was working the parking lots, then he, I, I believe him that people are bringing fireworks to the park to set them off.
Oh, yeah, I absolutely have no question on, on Mr. Stauffer's accounting of events, right? I just am, am again, thinking of what we have in existing code already. So, okay, so what I'm hearing then is council is supportive of staff bringing back an ordinance banning fireworks within the city?
The sale of fireworks. We already have fireworks banned within the city. And then after that, we should consider how we're going to communicate this information.
Okay, yep.
One more thing, um, on the municipal research, MRSC site here, they already have some examples of ordinances, but the one thing I think if council agrees that could be incorporated is you can also have a function that's an emergency ban in case of extreme drought conditions. So that's something that perhaps could be implemented sooner than that year delay if there was a conditions where we had severe drought and there was a high fire danger that you could go ahead and do an emergency ban.
Well, we are an open fire ban, aren't we? For the county.
The county currently has a burn ban in place and our current code, if I remember correctly, only would allow sales of fireworks for certain days. I would, I would struggle to see how you could use an emergency ban for the sale because the sale itself is not necessarily the thing that would be causing the emergency. It would be the unlawful discharge of fireworks. And I'm not saying, sorry, Dan, but I'm not saying that this is going to take a year and a half, but I do want council to understand that that may be part of that. So if it looks like that, you know, the banning of the sale was falling outside of that, then obviously council can move it much more quickly. Thank you.
I just, one brief thing to open discussion that wasn't on the agenda, and I apologize that I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting. You indulged me with that. Just, just taking advantage of our overdose awareness proclamation and Mr. Stauffer's comment at the beginning about the placement of Narcan at the little free pantry at the church, I want to foreshadow an idea that I'll try and bring back in a little bit more coherent way in September, that we look at placing in public places, particularly parks and so on, Narcan, availability of Narcan as well as Sharp's dispensers as a way of gesturing to the public that as a city, we're, we're responding to the concerns about encampments and drug use and so on within the city. So that's just a foreshadowing. I'm not looking for discussion tonight.
Well, the Department of Health has had funding to do that and there was maybe a conversation with Jamestown about providing a kiosk, but the funding went away, but it's coming back, I think. So September might be perfect timing for that. I'll get more information and have it ready for our next meeting.
Also, Dan, the Clallum County Transit, um, after lengthy discussions, animated discussions, they will be giving, have a free Narcan dispenser in their transit center in PA where there's like a combination national park stand and a, and, um, a lot of opposition. I was surprised. Sure. Thank you.
And I'm just checking to see, I know we got the email this morning about Seventh Avenue and the comments this afternoon, but, um, maybe what's the follow-up going to be on that?
Thank you. And I saw that as well. At least I saw the email that was forwarded you and so I forwarded that to Public Works and asked them if, to be prepared to answer any questions on that. And we have both Nick and Paul here to do that, if you'd like to hear from them.
Okay, good evening. For the record, Nick Dostie, city engineer. So I have a broad update, but first, if there's a specific question, I can address that first.
I think the question was about when the road's going to be done, if it's definitely going to be done by the end of summer, but also in the meantime, how are people, especially on foot or on bike or on motorized wheelchair, going to get through?
Okay, so I can answer that question with a general update. So I actually spoke to the superintendent and project manager today about several, several concerns, and one of those was a schedule update. So currently, the seventh corridor is closed for a culvert replacement that was scheduled several weeks ago. And so the, the crews are currently working in, in that corridor right now, just south of Daisy Lane. So as far as the current condition of Seventh, the work that has been done so far is, again, this culvert crossing, installation of a new water main that will eventually connect with our new deep well over at Dock Standard Park, and then utility coordination. So, uh, the original schedule has been delayed for frontage improvements along Seventh due to some coordination issues with the PUD and putting overhead power lines underground. It's my understanding that as of today, PCI, Pacific Civil Infrastructure, they have shored up the easements they need for moving and relocating poles for the crossings that they have along Seventh. And so that is the last infrastructure hangup in order to move forward with the Seventh frontage improvement. So what does that mean? So they will be taking all of the overhead power lines and putting them underground. That is the last piece of the puzzle for them to then set curb grade, which allows them to do road subgrade. And then based on the conversation I had with the project manager and superintendent, paving sometime mid-October of the Seventh Street Corridor. So as of right now, that's the update on vehicle access. From there, Phase One will be paved and after the paving, or around the same time is when the concrete will go in as well. And they will look to close out Phase One, which, if memory serves, should be 50 or 60 lots. So for final plat of Phase One, they'll be looking to pull building permits. So then the sidewalk portion of Phase One will be complete, which is in between McCurdy and Daisy Lane, along McCurdy for those improvements. The reason the street improvements are going to be complete for the whole corridor and the sidewalk improvements will be phased is the utility and stormwater development follows the phasing. So once the street corridor is done and Phase One is closed, they will move on to Phase Two shortly after that, at which point then, once they pave Phase Two, they will incorporate the concrete in that portion. And I anticipate that to be, at this point, anywhere between three to five months after the completion of. the completion of Phase 1. So that would put the whole corridor frontage of Seventh Street with sidewalk into next summer, but the actual street corridor should be paved, like I said, mid-October.
So that go all the way back to Silverhorn?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Ma'am, I'll just have Nick get with you after the meeting.
I think she's just asking what side of the street the sidewalks will be on. Will they be on the east side or the west side?
They'll be on the east side.
That's a long time for people who live in that area.
Is there a weather concern that was raised during public comment that we could, with that sort of a timeline, we could bump into just not able to do it for weather reasons?
So I can address that in two ways. The first being, I personally have done projects, paving projects, late into November. So it's a yes and no and both answer is, it is weather dependent, but it's not unheard of, especially in the Squim area, to pave into November. So, so yes, it is weather dependent. Now, as far as the condition of the street goes, and the potential for the existing condition to extend into wintertime, the contractor is on the hook for upkeep. So if there is a concern about potholing or sloughing of the shoulder or safety concerns, the contractor will need to address those. It's not going to be completely abandoned over the wintertime. Now, I am in contact with either the superintendent or the project manager, there are two different people with either PCI or Lennar, sometimes all three, on a weekly and depending on the activity daily basis. The condition of Seventh, while looking rather garish, is still compliant with the permit requirements, and I would say the maintenance that they have currently going on as far as maintaining the potholes or the lack thereof, and the consistent watering, is, they're doing a good job. It might not look like it because it doesn't look pretty, but construction isn't pretty. I understand there's concern about pedestrian access along that corridor, and I can empathize with that. However, my, my response is that the work zone does extend into the right-of-way. Part of that construction permit that they have been approved to do, as far as work within their boundary, within their parcel, does extend to the center line of that right-of-way. So that right-of-way is considered active construction and is a work zone, and while inconvenient, I would encourage people to find alternate routes for walking or biking. I do understand it can be frustrating, construction is frustrating, and it is a long time when you're thinking about current residents that are used to taking that corridor with their morning walk for their dog or to, for medical appointments and to get into town, and, and I can understand that. So the growing pains, while people don't really consider them temporary, are temporary. The contractor is actually on a very good timeline for the amount of work they have to do. The equipment that they have and the crew that they have are very good at what they do, and I've actually been very impressed with how responsive they are when I do come to them with concerns about signage, about safety, about dust. They, they respond usually within 24 to 36 hours. So I'm very encouraged with my interactions with them so far, that they will continue to move on as quickly as possible.
Does that answer your questions, Vicky? Counselor Lowe?
Yeah, they answer.
I'm glad I could, I'm glad, I'm glad Nick was here, because I wouldn't have had any of those answers. So, no, thank you. I mean, it's, it is what it is.
Well, I guess you have one other question, is what kind of notification has been given to the people living like on Daisy Lane, because they don't have any choice of, that's where they live in the middle of where the roads all ripped up?
So, so standard practice for road closures is one week posting prior. We coordinate with the contractor to make a public announcement along with the public posting, and through conversations, again, with the project managers, with Lennar and with PCI and the project superintendent, they do as best as they can to go door to door whenever there's any water shut offs or extended closures or interruptions. So the, from what I can tell, the communication with the direct accesses for properties like off of Daisy Lane and off of Seventh has been as open as, as is possible when, when doing large-scale construction like we're doing.
What are the chances of them getting done early?
That is a good question. The frank answer is, I don't know. But what I do know, as I mentioned, is the, the crew is motivated, I know the developer is motivated, we're already in talks about what building permit timelines look like, what review timelines look like, what inspection timelines look like. So the, the phrase "the machine is spooling" is, is very true. You know, when you have a big builder like that, start moving resources to start building homes and coordinating crews, timelines get, get pretty solid. So they may not be familiar with the, the weather that we're used to in the wintertime, but where they do work, their winters are harsher than they are here. So I can't see those crews shying away from work in the wintertime.
Thank you. You should, you make sure that you can follow up with them if they have any additional questions. Awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on for, since we don't have another meeting here in August, September 3, if anybody would like to attend?
If no one else can go up, I would try to do.
Okay, Kathy? And next mail will be September 9 at 5 o'clock. All right, if nobody has anything else?
I move we adjourn.
I second.
All right, have a good evening.